August work session order seven thirteen, August twenty sixth. We have one item on our agenda this evening. Your law and orders to the issues OSHA resolution. I think Steve Chase.
I'm going to turn it over to Chase in just a minute here because this is a personnel issue from that standpoint, but just to contextualize it for you. I think the easiest way to understand the challenge that we had with OSHA is to recognize that you have two jurisdictions at the federal and state level that have somewhat opposing intentionality behind them. So OSHA is designed to ensure that our workplaces are safe. They function at your workplace too. And it's all the workplace safety requirements that your companies are required to adhere to to make sure that when you come to work that you're not going to get injured. Okay? So those are things that we certainly take very seriously and have every intention of ensuring that our folks work in safe places. You think about all the ADA work that we've done to increase accessibility in our schools. We spent a lot of time working through our insurance carrier, Leslie would tell you, with slip and fall issues, lots of conversation with the folks as the weather changes. So those are things that are really important to us. You have to juxtapose that with the Department of Ed and our requirements to provide an education for students in the least restrictive environment. In this case, OSHA found that the danger to our employees was our students. So that puts us in a difficult position. So it's not a crack in the sidewalk. It's not unsafe lighting. It's our children. And so we are now in a position where the unsafe component of our work environment is what we do, which is educating kids. And so that is a big part of the challenge that we faced as we went through this. It was one of the reasons that we determined it was worth contesting the initial finding. This is not the first time we've had OSHA in. They've come in on other occasions. We've always been able to come up with a reasonable solution and a resolution with them. In this case, their finding about the danger that our children presented to our staff is one that we felt conflicted with our requirements under the US and the State Departments of Education to provide that education for all of our kids in the least restrictive environment. So because we ran into that roadblock with OSHA as we went through the resolution process, we determined that it was appropriate to push it further. We did this in conjunction with our legal counsel, seeking both clarification from them on our expectations that they had in working with our students to ensure that our staff have a safe and healthy working environment. So I'm going to turn it over to Chase. I know that we've already expressed to you we've got some concerns about some of the things we kind of can't say because we both want to ensure that we're not violating student issues from a FERPA standpoint and also that we're not violating staff issues from a HIPAA standpoint. So if we run into any of those gray areas, Chase will let you know about that.
I honestly don't have much to add except for the fact that we are complying with the order and the agreement. We made the proper postings and we're on track to fill our other obligations. But beyond that, I'll open it up to questions, but I think Steve really encapsulated where we are in the circumstances.
What was the order?
I'm sorry?
What was the order from OSHA?
I think that was shared earlier with the board, but the order came out and I mean, I have a copy of it. I can circulate it out there and you can just sit here and read it verbatim. It's a couple pages long.
Okay. And is that a public document?
It is.
Has that been presented to the public?
Yes. It's required to be posted at the place of the incident, which is always.
So it's posted at Penn?
It was, yes.
It was or is?
I don't know if it's still coming up there. It's there for thirty days and this came out in May and so thirty days would have expired several weeks ago.
Have we ever put it on the district website or anything like that or had it available in order to would it be possible to have its attachment to this work session so at least the public can see it?
I mean, if that's the board's desire, we're not required to do that.
Generally speaking?
Generally, it tells us what our reduced fine was. It says what the proposed fine was and then the settlement agreement, which is also part of it, it just lays out what we're going to do to kind of highlight those. Implement written policies and procedures that include Chapter 103 trainings, train all employees on our procedures, develop a crisis response team, have a safety care team meeting regularly to review the Chapter 103 reports, track all employee workplace violence incidents and investigate those. It says that none of the foregoing agreements shall be deemed as admission by the district, that the main purpose for compromising and selling the matter was economically amicably done and that we're supposed to post this and where we have to post it. So it really just kind of lays out the agreement without going into the why behind it or what took place.
So it doesn't share any personal information and wouldn't cause harm for that to be posted in the board box? So the public can have access?
No.
Well, I think we make it available to the public and it be an attachment to this work session so people can see it for themselves. Now, you said in there that something about tracking workplace, some like your second page of stuff you were rattling through on the requirements.
Did track all employee workplace violence incidents, violence incidents and complaints involving students and staff?
Do we, that comes, that comes out in our one report kind of disseminated in different categories, but do we have a category as far as student-staff?
We already collect a lot of that information for the state because that's in their reporting requirements. I know that when we initially looked at it, it may wind up because of the way the State Department of Ed requires reports to be collected in multiple buckets and not necessarily in one container.
Right. So is there a, so essentially you're taking different categories and putting them in, for OSHA's requirement, you're taking several categories and putting it into one?
They're actually.
Is that fair?
They're actually okay with us collecting them the way the states mandated it in the multiple buckets. They just want to ensure that we're continuing to do that.
Right. Now, the next time that report comes out, would there be any way to highlight and say that, okay, these categories are ones that OSHA had their eyes on? You following me?
I do. Probably if the numbers are high enough that they don't create identifiable situations for the students involved in them.
Sure.
So if there isn't a confidentiality concern, then yes.
Okay.
I don't know how many incidents there are, so I'm not sure how many of those categories would have nondisclosable information in them. We can look into that.
Right. Well, and, you know, you're absolutely right. OSHA covers all of us in our workplace. And with our ConIC in Davenport, if OSHA says you have to stay ten foot away from electrical panel, our ConIC says you stay twenty feet away from electrical panel. Now, is our policy with the district is to, I mean, I'm, you know, we are, hopefully we're providing a safe work environment for all of our staff and our students as well. But, you know, the less restrictive environment that is by the State Department of Ed, that's all they, now, and I had a discussion with an administrator today and they had problems with that same statement. And there's times when you may have a student that could be in the population for two or three hours in a small setting, but as we've gotten emails from people that have large class size, we have some crowding situations, are we creating potential problems when we have the least restrictive environment for some students all for too long? I don't know how I'm coming up with it.
No, I know where you're going. I would say that that determination is made through the IEP team and you've got multiple professionals plus the parents involved in that conversation. They spend a lot of time making determinations about what that least restrictive environment is. It's a very cooperative process. And I would say that, I wouldn't say they err on one side or the other. I'd say that they're looking for that appropriate determination based on that group decision-making process. And for lack of a better way to say it, they're not, their consideration isn't the teacher or the aide or the other students. Their focus is the child that's the center of that IEP. So they're making a least restrictive determination for that child. There may be ancillary issues that the staff, whether it's teachers or support staff encounter or the students that are in that student's classroom encounter, but the requirement is that you create the least restrictive environment for that child. And that is an issue that has some balance to it. You know this JP from sitting in there and what may be the least restrictive environment for that student may have an impact on other students or staff members that are in there. And that's where, that's where we ran into the challenge with OSHA, is we are required by law to create that environment for that child. And if it has negative repercussions on other students or staff, it's incumbent upon us to mitigate those, not to eliminate them. So I don't know if I could, if I'm saying it clearly enough.
Well, yeah, this is so complicated because typically it should be like you have a problem, you get rid of the problem.
That's our problem.
And I'm guessing that, I know there are probably parents and staff who would agree with that.
We would disagree with that.
And we would disagree with that because, and the state would disagree with that and the fed would disagree with that because it's illegal and it violates that kid's rights. But I mean, the fact that this got to OSHA is this weird way to say that I'm unsafe with my charge and how you, and it's in there, right? You know, it's the training. I mean, at the end of the day though, I think, you know, you're going to know that, who knows, right? There's bridges burned, maybe people who can't go into a situation because of things that have happened. I mean, that's all what you guys have to deal with, but it's not as simple as exclude the kid.
Well, the discussion that I had with this staff member wasn't exclude, but recognize that in a long day that there may be better times.
And that should, and it should happen, right, in that IEP meeting where the parent and hopefully the kid is involved, right?
So the only, sorry.
No, go ahead.
The only thing I would add is I don't want us to get too laser focused, right? Because this report or the settlement or this order was not about one certain subset of our student population. And so to zero in on students with IEPs, I think, is, really isn't where I think that we should be looking because this is about all our students. All our students are entitled to FAP, Free Appropriate Public Education. And so it could be an interaction between any student and a staff member. It does not have to be limited to a student that has an IEP. And so I don't want us to go down that path when really we have this belief for all of our students that, you know, that we have a duty to provide that education. And so as Steve said, that's one reason we took the step of appealing this in the first place is because we're just not comfortable saying, okay, this is just like every other work environment. Sorry.
Yeah, no, good point, Chase. That, you know, I'm just talking about the special ed process, but, and so whether, and that's where the family, right, has more rights, that they have more ability to say, my kid can handle two hours and then they need a break and then that's up to the team and the teacher to say, okay, how do we structure that day? And I would hope then, right, that if kids, right, are having such disruption that it becomes unsafe and that goes on, right, then even if they don't qualify for an IEP, the five or four plan can have breaks in place and that we can maybe be more proactive on that and say, okay, here's a situation where we might want to help structure, you know, kind of what's in the report as a before.
One of our frustrations in dealing with OSHA is that so many of the things that they ask you to correct are static. You can correct those. If they want you to stay ten feet away from that electrical panel, I can put a line of tape down there and say, don't go across that. Kids are not predictable like that. And you can have regular ed kids who have a behavior outburst just as easily as you have a special ed kid that has a behavior outburst. And that behavior outburst may result in that child making a poor decision that may physically impact a staff member. We do our best to train staff members in how to deal with that, de-escalation, appropriate physical reactions to it, but we can't prevent those things from happening without separating staff from students and that's not going to happen. And so that was one of our biggest challenges with this is we looked at it and said, the only resolution that meets all their requirements is that staff and students don't interact. That's not going to happen. So being unable to control the behavior of fourteen thousand kids, we're going to have some interactions with staff and students that are not at the level that we expect them to be. It's our job to appropriately react to them, provide support and care for our staff, the training that they need, the follow-up that they need. If Leslie were here, he would tell you that we have a large expense for things like broken glasses that happen every year.
And cell phones.
Cell phones, yep. Those are things that we just have to deal with. That's part of the cost of doing business in terms of working with our kids. We accept that that will happen and we have remedies for staff in order to make sure that we take care of them too.
Well, yeah, I've seen most kind of doing the bills, the purses and the shoes and things that are broken. Valid point. I mean, we have fourteen thousand plus kids, but we didn't have an OSHA report in every building. And we did have a speaker come for us tonight and talk about situations in that same building with bullying and things like that, violence. Is there more that needs to be done in that building?
I'm not sure where, I'm not sure that, A, we're at a place to have that conversation. I'm not sure that this is actually the forum to start having that conversation in. I haven't felt that that's outside the scope, I think, of this and quite frankly, I think that starts getting the things that could be considered either personnel or otherwise in all honesty.
It was a general question. We didn't have, you know, we have multiple buildings. This is the one that had that happen.
We can, I mean, we can always do more in all of our buildings.
Do we have greater incidences of bullying in that building than other buildings or is it on par with other buildings?
I don't, I'm not, I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Extrapolate on that a little bit. So we have this agreement, we mentioned that it's tracking this, but we're already contracting it. We're just giving it to someone else. Is there, there's assumed more or new things that we're doing? And if so, is it stuff that we are adding just there or is it something that, hey, why don't we just do that everywhere?
We are. I mean, these are district-wide and a lot of things we were already doing. I think that's part of our back and forth with OSHA was that we have policies in place and so we have trainings in place and the understanding of who needs to be trained on what aspects of what we're doing was one of the things that we're trying to work through. We talked about not just students, but a subset of our student population, but actually, and apologize, they gave the highlights, the order specifically says eliminate threatening acts of violence towards employees by aggressive students, aggressive parents, aggressive staff and/or other aggressive individuals school staff must interact with. And so OSHA didn't limit their report or didn't limit their findings to even students. They looked at it from the overall workplace and we look at that, Dr. Sean, it's not just about one site. It's something that we look at across the entire district.
No, one example, oh, go ahead.
It goes back to a lot of our conversations about building that strong MTSS system and how every student, no matter how adverse their behaviors are, but deserves strong tier one, tier two, tier three, and then our special education kids, of course, have goals specific to their needs and their IEPs. I think a changeover last year alone from moving away from CPI to QBS where we kind of decentralized the trainings at the district level to all buildings have QBS trainers. I think there's a nickel after example of that kind of thing happening as well as de-escalation or behavior basics training. So trying to get after it with the training aspect as well as the curricular aspect and the intervention aspect. It goes back to all those conversations that we've been having around social, emotional, behavioral, mental health.
I mean, we went back and forth with them, blah, blah, the language, because if you read that section that he just talked about, we can't eliminate that unless we eliminate the people that come into our schools, right? I mean, we can't, we can't eliminate the behavior. We can be prepared for it if it happens, but we can't eliminate it. And so that was one of our challenges as we were coming up with the resolution agreement with them is how to phrase that in a way that actually puts us in a position where we can implement and have some level of success with the results of the order.
And I think, you know, it just speaks to this larger question of the social, emotional and I think the more we can, again, kind of like from our presentation last work session, you know, the more you guys, us, can still this down and show us what we're doing with as few acronyms as possible, right? When on IV, I might have sixty seconds.
Sure.
Or two minutes to talk about some really complicated stuff. So not only what we're doing and then to share with us the data, here's how it's getting better. Here's our bullying data. Here's what we see. And I know we're not, we're not going to get into it on the individual school level, but I think we have to be able to absolutely to trust by seeing this data like, here's the trend, here's where it's heading. And we know we can eliminate it. We can't eliminate all bullying, but here's how we handle it and here's how we're now handling it in ninety-nine point nine percent of the situations with, from our staff perspective. It's a tall order, but I think it's just the, again, a further warning, like we, you know, our staff deal with a lot of stuff and we have to train them well and get that in place and then have it implemented in that way so that de-escalation is happening.
Right.
I agree. QBS, that's one of the biggest. I mean, CPI is check the box and you're done. There's very little accountability with it. And QBS is far more thorough. And getting the training as opposed to three trainers with seventy-five people in a gym, which I've gone through to like one person with ten, and you got to show me you can do this stuff and exhibit your ability or you don't get the card, which means you're not going to be working with the X, Y, and Z population. But that's a lot to tell somebody in IV.
Yeah.
Right? That's a lot to come out and say, well, here's how we're starting to do things. So the better you can help us with, here's what we're doing, here's maybe some examples of how all this is improving to learn from.
They're working on trying to put some of the content from the last work session. I said, I'd like it on a page. And there was a level of frustration, but they're working on it. So I'm hoping to have something that's, I didn't tell them no acronyms, so I'm going to have to go back and I wrote that note, no acronyms.
I just think it's important for everybody, because I know you guys are doing the work and I get that. And I can only imagine if after my workday I had to come tell a bunch of people about what I've been doing all day in a way, but our job is to go out to the community, be able to explain this in really lay terms like, you know, people have big questions on mental health, bullying, and we have to be able to say, here's what's happening in a way that's really digestible. So I don't know, you know, not to put more work on folks, but if it doesn't happen, we continue to get questions and accusations and things that we might not be able to answer, which then makes the whole organization look like maybe we don't know. Like if the board member doesn't know.
They're actually really excited about putting it together. So I know that they're, they just were frustrated when I told them they only had a page to do it. So I wanted to see what they could do first with the page and see if we need to go from there.
There's been a lot of comments made by both of you about we and that and it seems like it's legal representation. Should there be a closed session discussion on legal representation?
For this issue? I guess I'm not sure.
For the, for the district. Oh, on who the legal representation?
But we have that coming up.
We don't have closed session scheduled for it, but we certainly could.
Isn't that what we do at the year?
Organizational meeting.
We do it at the organizational meeting. In the past, we've had closed session in advance of that. We don't have one scheduled. Good idea if you would like that now to consider putting that on the calendar so we don't run up to that November date.
We should do that.
And, you know, we, you've characterized the problem primarily to different regulatory authorities in conflict, which is partly, yeah.
Go ahead.
We've got the State Department of Ed and this federal organization to ensure the safety of workers, which thank God we've got it. Is that something, you know, we've always put on our legislative priorities money and things like that. This doesn't really involve money. It just involves two different governmental entities trying to sort things out. Is that something that we should be considering talking with that?
Definitely worth talking to our legislators about it as they come back into session. Yeah? I think it's probably.
We address that, I'm not focusing only on this population, but when we ask for more money for mental health services, I think that gets a little bit of that, that's one way that we're offering safety for our students or any of our staff and home near students.
Certainly our federal delegation too.
JP, I'd just like to revisit something you said earlier and it was a very, I think, good point. We're talking about situation and I'm paraphrasing, but you said something to the effect that, you know, it's just kind of unfortunate how the event came to OSHA and then came back. And I agree with that. And we talked a lot about what we're doing for students, but for one, I don't want the board to think for one second that, you know, our employee safety isn't tremendously important. And, you know, for my reasons, my seat, that's one of the things that I'm most concerned about is not only are employees coming to work, but how do they feel about being at work? And so it's just making sure that not only do we share policies, but we also educate our employees because it obviously impacts all of our employees and so that they have the understanding, they know where they come to. Everybody has a run under, under OSHA and this employee exercise outright, but we also want them to feel like they've come to us and that they are going to get the respect and the care and the support they need. Clearly in the circumstance, this employee didn't feel that way. And so when I look at that, that's one of the areas why I feel like we need to do some work, right? Because I want our employees coming to us first so that we can work through those things with them and we've had some other circumstances where that has happened. And that, I think that's the sign of a healthy employee, a group of employees, when they feel like they can come and can work through those things. And so that's one of the things that stands out to me on this. It's not so much about all the trainings. It's okay, but we also need to get this feeling of a certain climate and culture for our employees as well as our students. And so when you said that, I didn't say at the time, I want to come back to it because that point's very well said and to take it in terms of work we can do in that area as well.
Well, and, but to a certain extent that you're absolutely right. You want your employees to come to you, you want your employees to feel comfortable to come to you. But we've had, I think, the same State Department of Ed say that we were retaliatory district and some of the things that happened with us in our special ed. In our discussion a couple work sessions ago, when we talked about asking the staff for suggestions, well, if we ask them and we don't do it, then, you know, with that, we've got to be consistent, right? You know, so we got to welcome their input. We got to make it, you know, if they want anonymous and protected, but I see a lot of conflicts and messages that get sent. And I can understand when some employees may feel that they have concerns and that's something that, you know, trust has to be earned and has to be built. So, yeah, that's going to be an ongoing one and one that we're going to have, we're going to have to.
Probably does. And in any organization, that's an ongoing, and it should be an ongoing focus of what we're doing and why we need to take time and talk about not only what are we doing for our students, but what are we doing for our staff? And that's why we had a conversation about retention. And I want that conversation to expand because we focus a lot on our teachers, which our teachers are, you know, our largest employee group. We know that they have the greatest impact on our students, but they're not the only ones that work in the organization. And so as we have these conversations, we need to expand it so people in our other employee groups are also having that voice heard and we're expanding those efforts.
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, that was helpful for discussion.
So then that information will be added to the, to the work. Awesome, thank you.
Okay, is there anything else? Complicated stuff, pardon. Is there a motion to adjourn? It's silent, so, all right, great.